Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. I would like to call this meeting to begin. I appreciate everyone being here. We've got a nice crowd. We are missing one particular person, and that is our chairman. And so you have the substitute chairman tonight. And so I would ask that you not try to take advantage of the substitute teacher. Give him a break. Everybody be on their Ps and Qs. But in all seriousness, this is important business that we do each month. As Drew likes to say, this is the people's business. And so we are always glad to see people in the audience witnessing and participating in the process. But before we get started, I would ask Mr. Pecote if he would to give our indication.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for life, health, and strength. Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for all the wonderful things that you do in and out of our lives. Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for this opportunity to sit on this board today and represent our city. Heavenly Father, we are here to do what's in the best interest for everyone. Heavenly Father, we ask that you just keep us all, Lord, in your keeping care and allow us to make the best decision that we can possibly make for the citizens of our city. Lord, we ask this in your Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, the first order of business is to approve the minutes. The commissioners have been issued the minutes from the last meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. All right, the next order of business is a public hearing. PC 2022-06, it is a request to consider the abandonment of City Rideaway located on Mimosa Drive identified as Florence County Tax Map 90037-03-013. All right, turn it over to the city staff.
All right, thank you, Chairman. Good evening, everybody. So Michael and Sharon Jack are requesting of the city the abandonment of this portion of Rideaway. This is in the Pine Acres subdivision off of Cherokee Road. So here is the, the red box represents where the Rideaway will actually be abandoned. It is only touching 907 Sherwood, and it's not touching any other parcels. So the owners of 907 Sherwood would be the property owners affected by this abandonment. So here's a 1947 survey of the area. Well, we had trouble figuring out exactly what this Rideaway was. The Jax went to DOT, because Mimosa Drive is a DOT road, to get an encroachment permit for a second driveway. They have a driveway off of Sherwood, but they would also like to use, utilize a driveway off of Mimosa Drive. DOT said, you're in the wrong place. You need to talk to the city. And came to find out, looking at some old deeds of where previous property had been sold, we inferred that this is in fact a city property. And the original intent of this five-foot Rideaway was, we believe, a walkway, a parkway to get to various pocket parks within the Pine Acres subdivision. So the Jax are requesting for us to abandon this five-foot wide strip of land to allow them to get an encroachment permit from DOT to get a secondary driveway. So here are some pictures. This is the rear of 907 Sherwood Drive. The arrow points to the, to the home. And this is where the owners are requesting secondary access off of Mimosa Drive. And here's another picture, just, just looking the opposite direction. We did talk to other departments within the city. We could not find any reason to maintain the city's interest in this piece of property. If you look at the utility map, it does look like the sewer might run through this property, but the city engineer went out there and confirmed that the city sewer does not run through this particular property. So seeing that the pocket park was previously sold to 904 Mimosa Drive, and it's actually been absorbed, the city sees no reason to have a parkway to the pre-existing park. So we would recommend that this portion of the property be abandoned to allow the Jax to get secondary access, a driveway. In, in doing this, it does open up the possibility of a second frontage to where a subdivision would be possible. They could have a house off of Sherwood, and then in the future have a house off of Mimosa Drive. So, but as it, as it stands now, the Jax would just like a secondary access off of Mimosa Drive. And that does conclude staff's report.
Okay. Any questions of staff from the commissioners? So the way we generally do this, first of all, just a couple of house rules. We are a recommending body here at the Planning Commission. We do not decide anything. We refer it with a recommendation to city council. So we have these issues that come up. We, we will ask first if there's anyone who's in favor of the motion or the action. And we will give a few people an opportunity to speak. We will limit that to about two minutes. And, and then we'll ask if there's anybody opposed. And we'll give people the opportunity to speak if they are opposed to the action. If you do wish to speak, we ask that you come to the podium and introduce yourself into the microphone so that everyone can hear. And, and then you may begin speaking. So at this point, I will close the, the city staff has concluded their report. I will now ask if there's anyone here tonight who wishes to speak in favor of this action. Okay, see anyone? Is there anyone here who is opposed and would like to be heard? Okay, then I will close the public portion of the meeting and ask the commissioners to call for a vote. Have a motion.
I move that we accept the recommendation that it be abandoned.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the recommendation to abandon the road, the Rideaway. All right, at this point, then, we will call for a vote. Any discussion before we vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Move on to the next item. All right, this is PC 2022-15, request to rezone 2150 Fernleaf Drive from NC 15 to NC 6.3, identified as Florence County Tax Map number 90018-07-003. Turn it back over to city staff.
All right, thank you, sir. So this is 2150 Fernleaf Lane. If you remember, last month, Planning Commission looked at 402 Thomas Road to the south, where the owner was trying to rezone the NC 15 to NC 6.3. Pretty much the same case, just, just a different parcel. So now we're, we're dealing with the wooded lot, this on the corner of Fernleaf Lane and Second Loop Road. So this is zoned, the NC 15, and future land use is consistent with neighborhood conservation and the, and the surrounding neighborhood of Country Club Forest. So at the last meeting, the HOA president of Country Club Forest actually brought to our attention that there is a private covenant in place preventing any sort of building on this particular property besides a single-family detached home. So once we became aware of that, the Planning and Enabling Act tells us that the city cannot issue any permits counter to that unless the HOA were to vote to release those covenants or by judge order. At this time, neither, neither one of those things have happened, and that the neighborhood is against such a rezoning. And so this is a, this is a map that Mr. Bruce Smith provided. It does show, it's not the full scope of the original plat of the neighborhood, but it does clearly show this is a numbered lot, which signifies it is a single-family detached. That, that was the future plan, and it is protected by this covenant. So if it were rezoned, it would have to meet all the multifamily conditions, including putting up a 25-foot width Type C buffer yard to buffer it from the single-family homes adjacent to it. And it would have to meet all the other ordinance in the city of Florence for development. So here's some pictures of the wooded lot. Again, this is the corner of Fernleaf Lane and Second Loop Road. And 402 Thomas Road did go to city council on Monday, and it was voted down for rezoning. And that concludes staff's report.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Why didn't it come back to, why didn't it come back to us?
Oh, this is a different parcel. The applicant can make the request as the owner. We can't simply throw it out, but at the same time, we can't issue any permits counter to the protective covenants.
And the protective covenants applies to this part of the property also?
Yes, ma'am.
I wasn't here last month. What was the property? Can you point it out on your map?
Yes, sir.
That was dealt with last month?
Yes, sir. So 402 Thomas Road, it is just to the south. It's the vacant lot down here.
Okay. The opposite south.
Right, right. And at that time, we didn't know there were any private covenants in place. Thankfully, the HOA came out and forced and said, wait, wait a minute, we have some private covenants in place that would restrict this. So that's why we were able to put it in the staff report this month as opposed to last month.
And that was discovered after the last meeting?
It was discovered at the meeting.
At the meeting?
At the public hearing portion.
Sounds like you missed a phone.
That's right. So it was a good thing.
But nothing has changed?
Nothing has changed. The, the HOA is against it. No judge has ordered that it is dissolved. So the private covenants are still in place.
So the HOA is against the rezoning?
Yes, sir.
This, this request?
This request. The Thomas Road request and the Fernleaf request. It's the same owner of both parcels. He wants to put apartments on those lots.
And according to the protected covenant, we can't even make a decision on it?
The protective covenants are in place unless the HOA votes to allow it or a judge orders the protective covenant dissolved so that the owner is able to build multifamily like he wants.
And what is our authority here?
Well, it can be zoned, whatever. I mean, it could be zoned commercial or industrial for that matter. But if, you know, according to the Planning and Enabling Act, if we're, you know, at the time or prior to us issuing a permit, if it's brought to our knowledge or our, you know, you know, to us, that there are restrictive covenants in place that are against what they're proposing there, then the Planning and Enabling Act asks us to either withhold the permit, we're not able to, to issue the permit until such time that the HOA gives us a permission to issue it, or to, or a court order is given, you know, where they, the applicant has sued the HOA and gotten a court order saying otherwise. So the, the fact of the matter is, is that the request is still being made for the change from one zoning to a more dense zoning. But regardless of what that zoning happens to be, we would be unable, we would be unable to issue a zoning compliance for anything other than single-family on that location, which is, you know, which was the reasoning for denial the last time.
Right.
For the adjacent piece of property.
So the, the property owner is within their right to come before us?
That's right. It is a separate piece of property, so they are fully within their right to, to come before us despite the circumstances.
But there's really no option that we have. Okay, all right. So any other questions, commissioners? Then I will open the, open the floor. If there are anybody here, if there's anyone here in favor of this, if they would like to come forward and speak, I would ask you to do so now. If there, don't see anyone, if there's anyone who is opposed, you're welcome to come forward. If not, then I will close the public hearing and call for a vote. Oh, excuse me. Somebody raised a hand? Did I miss something? I'm sorry. Please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name's Bruce Smith. I was here a month ago.
Okay.
And we, we ran around the neighborhood and got 73 signatures on the petition. So the neighborhood is completely understands and are behind this. And I found it interesting in the conversation today that there needs to be a 25-foot buffer between any built property and the next home. And there's an easement that would be required over on, on Second Loop, which would leave how much property on that lot?
Oh, yeah, the 25-foot buffer yard is for multifamily apartments. So it would require an easement.
That lot even shrinks where it makes it kind of ridiculous to think about being a, being a multifamily home property there. But to still, we, we still stand by our covenants, and everybody in the neighborhood would like to see that stay a residential neighborhood.
Okay. Mr. Smith, are you the president of the HOA?
I'm the treasurer.
The treasurer, okay. Were you here last month to speak on the prior property?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any questions of Mr. Smith before I let him sit down? Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else who is opposed that would like to speak?
My name is Larry Orr, Mr. Acting Chairman.
Welcome, Mr. Orr.
I'm a resident of the, of the neighborhood and also on the HOA board. We have not voted to release this property from the restrictive covenants. As far as the restrictive covenants, they are filed of record in the courthouse. So when the person bought the property, they should have been aware that the restrictive covenants existed on the property. And as far as I know, they're still valid and existing. They should be residential, single-family. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody got any questions, Mr. Orr? Thank you, Mr. Orr. Anyone else? All right, then we'll close the public hearing and call for a vote. Have a motion.
Since there's no change from the last time and the restrictive covenant is still in place, I move that we deny.
Motion deny. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Motion and a second, deny. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the action is denied. Move on to the next item on our agenda, which is PC-2022-16, a request to rezone, excuse me, request to zone CG pending annexation. The Florence Housing Authority office is located at 2640 West Palmetto Street, identified as Florence County Tax Map number 90004-01-026. Turn it back over to city staff for report.
Good evening. This is the, it was formerly a BiLO restaurant, BiLO restaurant, grocery store located on the corner of Parker Drive and Palmetto Street on, it's currently in the county of Florence, and it has been purchased by the Florence Housing Authority, and they are requesting that it be annexed into the city. There is city limits property across the street, and across the street is zoned Commercial General, and that's what they want to be zoned as well. So that's what they're requesting. The future land use cites it as neighborhood conservation, and it is right next to a church, and it is surrounded by a mixture of multifamily and commercial uses. Here are some site photos of it, and the, as you can see, it is a large commercial parcel. So the Commercial General zoning designation would be appropriate for it. And that concludes staff's report.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners? Would you mind putting the map back up a lane? What's the, the corner, closest to the corner?
That is a small, little commercial area as well. I think there's three or four tenant spaces in there.
Okay.
But it's next to Habitat 2000, and then across the street is a nursing home and some more apartments, as well as a few commercial uses.
Okay. Okay. No questions of staff? At this point, I will ask if there is anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this action, to please come forward. Seeing no one, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right, seeing no one as well, then I will close the public hearing and call for a vote. Have a motion?
Motion for approval.
I have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
I just forgot to say aye.
Oh, gotcha. We'll take it. Okay, request is approved. Move on to the next item, which is PC-2022-17, request to rezone 1309 West Dixie Street from NC 6.1 to NC 6.2, identified as Florence County Tax Map number 90044-01-005. Ask city staff to make their report.
All right, this parcel is located up near Harmony Street off of West Sumter Street. As you can see here, it is currently zoned NC 6.1, which is a single-family only designation, and it is next to a small church, which is on campus. And the parcels across the street are in the county. And it, the future land use for it is neighborhood conservation, so this would be in keeping with that. The original zoning for this area was R4, which was multifamily, and most of the block developed as duplexes. But the NC 6.1 designation that was applied to it with the advent of the new Unified Development Ordinance and new zoning map in 2018 only permits single-family housing. The way it stands now, those duplexes would not be permitted to be rebuilt if there was anything to happen to them. The property owner wants to build a duplex on that parcel in keeping with the majority of the houses around it, although there is some single-family across the street from it. And he would not be allowed, the new ordinance does not allow narrow lots. The lot has to be at least 90 feet wide. So he would only be able to put a single duplex on this parcel. He could not further subdivide it. And these are some photos of the areas. You can see the top-left picture is looking straight on at the lot, and those white buildings around it are all duplexes. They're also in the lower left, and that's across the street to the west. The church immediately to the east of it is in the upper-right corner, and then across the street in the county where there's some single-family houses is in the lower right. And that concludes staff's report.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners?
Yeah, I got a question.
Okay.
Put your picture back up for the please, please, ma'am.
Which one?
Okay. You said that once the, the houses duplex, they won't be allowed to build them back again. Am I right? That's what you said?
That's correct. Right now, they would be considered a legal non-conforming use.
Okay. So when you redid this map in 2018, they weren't supposed to put those parts, am I right?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
No, they weren't there in 18.
The houses were pre-existing. All the duplexes were already there.
Okay, and then in 2018, that's when they, they came and did the neighborhood, provided 82?
Well, that's when this new zoning was laid over it and the NC 6.1 was put there, yes.
Right. Okay, so what I'm looking at, across the street from it is multifamily homes. And I, I would like to see that stay as is, the multifamily, multifamily homes. That's where I'm looking at it, because the way they got it mapped off there, you, that, that, there's that one piece of property that's across the street from multifamily homes, am I right? Single family homes.
The ones across the street in what's in the white there, those are the ones in the county. Those are largely single-family houses.
Right, right. That's what I'm saying. It looked like to me, the way, when they draw that map off, they were looking at those single-family homes there, to me. And then I, I would love for that to stay as is.
A single-family, not multifamily.
Right now, he can only build a single-family house on that lot.
Right, right, okay.
But single, what's, single-family, yeah, single-family.
And zoning designation.
People will build those single, a partners there.
No, and the, and the designation he's requesting only allows single-family and duplex. It does not allow multifamily or triplexes.
Right, right. That's what I'm saying. The only thing he can do then, the only thing we're looking at, is that 61 and 62 is what's bothering me. Now, if it stays 61, what can he do then?
Just a single-family house.
Okay. And if it's 62, he could do?
A duplex, one duplex.
Right, okay.
Okay, one duplex. Not a, not a partner, not multifamily, just one.
Correct, just one, two-unit attached house, yes.
Okay, the, is that your question?
Yes.
Okay, the, the blue, remind me what the blue section is.
That is that church right next to it.
Okay.
That's a campus designation.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? All right, and I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak in favor of this action to come forward.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I am the owner of this property. And just in keeping with, I actually have some copies of, a couple of map fixtures as well that I did, but just in keeping with the majority of the rest of the street, I do request that we, we change the zoning from NC 6.1 to 6.2. As you see in the photographs, in the presentation from staff and the, and the photographs that I have passed out, the majority of the street is multifamily duplex. I don't have any drawings or elevation sketches of what we would put, or what the design would be, but it would be in keeping with what is the white, single, the white duplexes that, that are already on the street. I'm willing to answer any questions that you may have, commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Benoit. Any questions of Mr. Benoit from the commissioners? Okay, we have one.
So the, in the photo I passed out, the yellow box is the property of the zone. It is currently zoned for a 6.1 single-family home. I want to, I'm requesting that we are allowed to change the zoning to 6.2 to build a duplex, which is in keeping with the rest of the street. The rest of the street is already duplex except across the street.
Okay.
And then the church, obviously.
Is it just one more?
Just, I just want to build one more, yes, ma'am. I, I, I don't have any of the other ones currently. I just want to build a duplex on this current piece of property.
But now the other homes that's already existing, they are non-conforming. So in other words, they were grandfathered in.
Yes, ma'am.
So if, if you did a duplex now, that would be, in fact, we would have to change it. So if, if you did a duplex now, that would be, in fact, we would have to change it in order for you to do that. So now, now you're asking that we change so that you can go back to a non-conforming duplex that was built prior to um, the 6.1?
Yes, ma'am, but the, the reason why that, that was, that particular property was zoned as 6.1, I believe, is, is because it was vacant comparatively to the, you know, there was no duplex there. And so obviously, yes, the, the homes if, on the duplex now, if they were to be burnt down and have to be rebuilt, they would have to either apply for a zoning request to be rebuilt as a duplex, or they would have to build as a single-family home. But it is in keeping with the rest of the street. I'm not trying to change anything other than what is on the rest of Dixie Street.
Right, and I guess what I'm saying to you, it would be within keeping, but what's there shouldn't be there to begin with. They made allowances for that to continue because it was already there. So now we've had um, a new um, ordinance to come along to say, make it a single home. You're asking us to go back to something that's non-conforming, but was grandfathered in. So we wouldn't be going back instead of going forward. Because see, this was just changed in 2018?
18.
2018, yes ma'am.
So.
Okay. All right, any other, any other questions uh, for Mr. Benoit? Anything else you'd like to say?
No, yes sir.
You said you were, you were the owner of this particular property?
Yes, sir.
Was there another representative here last month on your behalf, a gentleman, uh, someone speaking on your behalf?
N- no, sir, it didn't come before the commission last month.
It did not come before the commission?
This is the first time it's coming before the commission, yes sir.
That was some other property.
That was, no, okay, okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you all so much, appreciate it, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Can I ask a question before we proceed? How, just, how is it that we would approve an ordinance that would wipe out the prior zoning of a particular area in such a wide swath?
I'm not sure, the, the maps were put out, you know, they were published prior to the adoption of the ordinance. Um, you know, we, we went through, they were, they were sent out to members of council and, and the public for review. And, you know, certain changes were, were made based on some of the, the neighborhood, I, I guess the neighborhood conservation areas in there. And this is what ended up being adopted. Um, this, this area was originally zoned um, under the old zoning code that, that did allow duplex development. I, I do know that this, this style of duplex development and kind of this, you know, this, this narrow with them facing sideways is what ended up causing a moratorium to be put in place on duplex development. And then the design standards um, brought forward. So uh, you know, that may have had some, some influence on, on this, the entirety of this block or this neighborhood area being designated as NC 6.1 at the time. I, I don't recall to be honest with you, but I do know it, it went out to various um, you know, individuals and it went through planning commission and council for adoption. And that's how it, that's how it ended up after, after all the public input and the um, council input and planning commission input and staff input.
So the prop, the property owners who have duplexes there currently um, understand, I suppose, that if something were to happen to their structure, they were, should not be able to rebuild.
They could, if they came, if they came back to us in a timely manner, just within six months of, of something happening to it, they could make application and rebuild the exact same structure there, type, type of.
So they could?
They could, yes, within a six-month time. And if something, if something happened, we would inform them of this so they could be proactive and, and make that application.
Well, the, the key word that I heard was moratorium and I, would you explain, maybe elaborate on that?
Um, sure, this was before my time, so I don't know how much, how much I'll be able to elaborate. But I do know there was a time that um, there was development, annexation and development that was occurring that um, our, I guess, this style duplex development that was not character of the, you know, it wasn't of a residential character or, or a single-family character. You know, duplex development is meant to be single-family attached homes. And, you know, and they're meant to be facing outward, you know, look like homes essentially. And when you turn them sideways on a property like this, it takes on a very different appearance. It takes on a multifamily appearance. And, and a lot of individuals were building um, quad duplexes and triplexes in the same manner. And um, at the time, council uh, put a moratorium in place on duplex and multiplex development such that these design standards could be put in place. And the design standards were put in the old code and they carried over into the Unified Development Code. And they essentially provide design standards for duplex, triplex and townhome development and, and multiplex development, where they have to have um, small stoops or porches, lights on the outside, doors facing the street, um, appropriate parking, um, you know, things of that nature and materials that are characteristic of the existing neighborhood. So it, it blends in better. And those are in place now. So, so duplex development.
This wasn't an accident, this was mindful that?
Possibly.
I was here doing that.
Yeah.
I, I know all about that.
Okay, can I ask a question? Okay, so if, usually when we, when we do a zoning, we usually zone in those areas basically the same. We try to zone most of those areas that close together, it's the same. Okay, so just a question. Okay, if, in this case, if everything around it is duplex and this one particular lot is, is not, is not um, developed yet, so are we asking him to now put a single-family home around all these duplexes?
Yes, that's the way it is currently zoned, yes. And there's single-family across, across the road. And there's one other single-family, I think on the opposite corner facing Harmony Street on the corner. Other than that, this, the entirety of this block is developed in, in duplexes.
Mr. Chairman, may I add another comment?
Come, yeah, come forward.
I will say, as I mentioned before, that I don't have any elevation or plans drawn for this. And I mean, we, we don't have to, you know, I can try, we, we can draw the, I mean, I, obviously you're taking my word for it, but we can draw the plans to, to match a more forward-facing duplex instead of a sideways-facing duplex. We don't have any plans drawn at this time. But I, I point out, I mean, we, we would try to match whatever we all felt comfortable with. But, you know, the rest of the street is, you know, obviously I wouldn't want to make it look totally different than how the rest of the street looked either.
Right, okay.
Yes, sir.
Got you, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, yes ma'am.
Okay, I got one more question, I, I don't know, okay, so in 2018, when it was rezoned, when this, so why was it changed when there was already duplexes there? Why was it?
Because the people did not want that type of duplex.
Oh, cause, it's because of the style?
You had homes with one person, the front door was in the front, another, the front door might have been in the back. It was squeezing houses on properties that was too small.
Oh, okay, okay.
And there was an outcry.
That's what it turned sideways.
That's right, okay, I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
So that they could get a lot of people in.
And we're, we're, because the way the lot is, the, the width of the lot, we're not able to put two on there anyway. So if we, if it meant us turning the duplex to be forward-facing and putting two parking pads or whatever it may be, then that's no problem at all for us. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Benoit.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Okay. Uh, then I will um, ask if there are anybody who is opposed uh, to this action, if you would come forward.
Great evening, everyone. My name is Jonathan Briggs and I'm a, a community member along with many that's in the uh, audience. In keeping with the uh, the city's plan and the revitalization of uh, building the community, we just agree and oppose to put any more duplexes, apartments or anything in that community. We want to stick with the same, single-family homes, affordable, where we can add a sense of value and uh, reduce some of the, the matters that we do face in that community. And so uh, we just ask that uh, we understand the owner and we understand his position. Nevertheless, the community themselves are saying enough with the apartments, duplexes and so forth and so on. Let's get the people in a mindset and a place to live in their own home.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions, Mr. Briggs? Thank you, sir.
Thank you so very much.
Anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to this action? Yes, ma'am, come forward. Good evening.
My name is Marisia Cummings-Cooper. And I give the full name because the Cummings is where it comes from, from the West Florence Northwest Community where I was raised. And in that community where the gentleman, and I understand uh, what you're saying, but our neighborhood is vulnerable as it is. And both, and you saw the picture of those uh, duplexes, they do not add to the community. And I think Ms. George said it was grandfathered in. Well, the space may be there and you're only asking for one. But we are, and I miss, might not need to bring this up, but we already come into the city planning commission about the Harmony Street, which is one street over. That is getting ready to be rezoned. And I, I don't understand the position of the plant. How do you zone these areas? One street over, a lot here zoned one thing, another lot over here zoned one thing, and another lot over there? I don't understand that. I was under the impression that your whole community would have zoned, we were um, are three for residential family homes. And where he wants to build, the gentleman, on West Dixie Street, he wants to take it from NC 6.1 to NC 6.2. NC 6.1 says residential homes. That's what we want. We want, we want less rental housing and we want affordable homes that our young people can have. We would like to see that in our community. We do not want to see any more rental houses, especially like the ones over there we have now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is anyone else that would like to speak?
Good evening. I am Jean Zollycoffer, a resident of that community.
I'm sorry, would you state your name again?
Jean Zollycoffer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay. We have a lot of concerns in that community. And as you heard, I, I'll try not to repeat what they said. But um, our main thing is to be able to own a house. To have it there so they can actually own the house and pass it on, because that's where we came from. That's how we inherited that property, most of us, okay? Some of us bought it, but most of us inherited. And I want to leave it for my children, okay? And I want to leave a nice area for my children right now. Now um, some of the concerns that we have, if you put that thing in there, we already got traffic problems. We have um, bull craft and another place for seizing something, that have those big old trucks that use Sumter Street, which is a two-lane street in a residential area, trying to get to Cashwa, trying to get to Darlington Street to get out of there. Um, safety problems for the adults and the children. Children don't have a place to play as it is, that will add more to it. Cause you know, if they, you build it, they're gonna come with children. There's no park area, nothing. Noise, of course, comes with the traffic. Proper drainage. I was told that's a swamp area, I don't know, but we need proper drainage back there. And really after listening to all the news and everything, you need to change the drainage all over this place, all over Florence. You know that's a problem.
I don't know who that's directed at, but I, I don't think ours. I hope not us, anyway.
Um, we don't want to decrease our property value. That would be another concern. Trash pickup in that area, you got little green city trash cans, which don't hold anything for all of those people that are in the units now. You have trash on the side. It only comes one day, there's no big trash den. Plus, there's an area there where it says, "Do not dump trash," big old sign. You video and it says on the sign, which I know you're not doing. And they're just putting everything there, okay? That's another problem. Parking for the residents. Now you can have maybe one or two people you think got a car. We have company and our guests don't have a place to park. That interferes with the children. They played out there, there's a ditch there with water in from the other day. The little girl put a piece of tree across the ditch. She and her sister balancing themselves on the tree limb and there's water in that ditch. You understand what I'm saying?
Sure.
We don't want that. There's no storage for those things. You know? They, the children, they got their trampoline and bicycles and everything right there. There's no storage in the back when they want to do the little cookout thing. And um, that's another problem, and landscaping. Worse than an army barracks, if you ask me. There's no, no kind of greenery. And the pavement there, near the ditch, ditch is coming loose. Somebody, that thing is going to give away. Those are just some of the pertinent problems that's on our, our minds. And this fellow, um, sir?
Ma'am, 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 would you address us, please?
I did, oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, that's all right, just address us, he's already spoken.
Accept my apology.
Yes, ma'am, please continue.
All right, now I'm not, um, addressing those concerns I want you to think about, okay? Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Am I allowed to ask?
Uh, yes, ma'am, we go, I, I, we'll take one more, but I think we've heard from everybody who's opposed. So, but if you'd like to, please come forward again, we need to hear you. What, what?
My name is Marisia.
We just, we need to record you is the reason we need you to come to the podium, thank you.
Could they put up the slide of the duplexes again? Is it possible to ask that? Okay, can you see, there's no play area, there is no, um, in the back, there's nothing because there's a little sink for them. And I think, is it, she said they're barracks, can you see?
Speak to us, please.
Okay, can you see? You can tell she and I are educators. I, we beg your pardon.
That's quite all right.
But um, the, uh, where the church is, the church is facing this way. And um, when I got the call about the sign being there, we'll just address March Day, we just addressed the planning commission about the Harmony Street rezoning. Before we can even get that straightened out, we got a call about another sign one street over on Dixie Street. So we're going, what's going on? Everybody wants to build apartments over in Northwest Community. But if you see, there's no place for the kids and like she said, they're in the streets. No, nothing. It's just hard, and across the street, they're homes. And um, some of the senior citizens there, they may not be here, but they would prefer to have, you know, rather homes, rather than.
Sure, thank you so much. Okay. Okay, all right, I think we've had, um, we've heard from several people, and I appreciate your input and feedback, and it's very important, and, um, and so thank you for doing so. At this, at this point, though, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the floor for motions from the commissioners.
I'm making motion, we deny it.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to den- to deny. Is there, uh, any conversation? I did have something I wanted to ask before we vote and, of the commissioners. Um, my, my question, and it may have been answered, was, um, if a, if the, if the duplex was rotated so that it fit what a typical duplex and doesn't look like what these other duplexes look like, um, is that, is that a no-fly zone as well, as far as?
I think, um.
What you guys have heard?
No, because here, I'm, I'm want you to think. Do you want that in your, beside your house?
Well.
That's the way we have to think now, because, see, sure, we, we have the community came up and say they don't want it.
Right.
Well, I don't care if you turn it upside down, they don't want that in their community. They want a single-family home where people can buy and own their own houses.
Right.
They do not want somebody coming there, putting up a, run a property, which they are never owned. And he'll be getting thousands and thousands of dollars of money, and they'll never own that piece of property. That's why we say, that's why they were zoned for single-family homes.
Right.
And so that's what we are voting on, now, we turn the pr- property, we voted on the B six dot one, that's, that's.
Right, right, well, e- exactly, and I, I don't disagree with you, but I'm just clarifying, I, um, city staff said the moratorium was issued on these duplexes that were designed the way they were, that are all in the neighborhood, and that was what was, the moratorium was on, and I'm just asking if, um, if it was not built that way, but built another way, would that be acceptable?
You would have to build it to the current, um, unified development code requirements, build, design standards, which is facing forward, as Mr. Dudley was saying, with more of a single-family house style to it. It would just be an attached, single, two attached single-family houses.
Right.
That's right, so under the current code, that's the way it would have to be built.
It would have to be built that way, he wouldn't have a choice.
Right.
So, okay.
The only instance we've allowed is when they're on corner lots, and then, you know, it, it still looks like a house, but they fa- they can, one can face one street, and one can face the other, otherwise, you know, it's face out.
Um, does staff know when the property changed hands, ownership?
No, it did not.
Um, in, in looking at the dimensions of the parcel, a- another option under the current zoning code um, may be to subdivide the property into two separate lots. Um, it's very close in lot width, you know, based on our measurements, it's a hundred and fourteen feet wide. Um, the lot, the minimum lot width in the NC six point one is sixty feet. So if you divide one fourteen by two, that gives you fifty-seven feet, which is just shy of the sixty-foot requirement, but a variance request might alleviate that, and could separate the property into two parcels, and two individual single-family homes could be built on the parcel. So that may be another avenue for the property owner in this case. Um, again, I, I don't know the exact dimensions of the property, if, if our measurements are off, and, you know, and a plat proves that there's enough land there, that that, they could do that administratively. Um, but if it's a hundred, definitely if it's a hundred and fourteen feet or less, then it, it could go through the variance process, and if approved, again, for a public hearing, that may be an avenue for it.
Right, okay, yeah, yeah, so.
Just going that out there.
No, I, and I, I think that's, that's good, I, I, you know, I mean, we have, we as a commission are looking out for the, the community and the neighborhoods, that's our charge, and we talk about that all the time. And so we want to, we want to look out for those that live around a piece of property and try to do our best to protect, um, to protect the community, so, um, but that does, uh, that does give, I mean, this is a little bit of a unique situation, I think. I mean, he's surrounded by what he wants to do, and just wants to do what's there, but I, you know, it's, it's also not zoned for that, so, understand that. And so, uh, I think the, from, from the conversations we've had, I, I think we all probably know where the vote's headed, but I think as a property owner, it's nice to know if there is an alternative, that maybe, uh, he could come back to the city and, and, and make a different proposal, and maybe a different way to use the property. So, okay, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion, then I'll call for the vote. Uh, the motion was to deny the, the action, all those in favor of denying the action, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then, then the action is denied. The, um, I would encourage you to give the city, though, and see if there's an alternative to what, to, to, to what you want to do, and maybe, maybe you guys can figure out a way to make that work. Okay, uh, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is PC dash two zero two two dash one eight, request for sketch plan review of Barudy Townhouses to be located on East, uh, NB Barudy Street, identified as Florence County Tax Map Number is nine zero one seven zero dash zero one dash zero two three, nine zero one seven zero dash zero one dash zero two four, and nine zero one seven zero dash zero one dash zero two five. Turn that over to city staff.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Uh, the facility map identifies the proposed development will be located on the outskirts of downtown Florence. The location, the location map identifies the proposed townhome development will be between one sixty-four East Barudy Street and one ninety-eight East Barudy Street. Um, the current zoning map identifies the parcels as Central Business District, which is intended for development of residential, commercial, and misuse buildings in the downtown area. Um, due to the closeness of the proposed development in the downtown area, the future miller use map identifies the parcels as Central Business District. Uh, according to the, um, townhome standards in section one dash two point eight point two, residential and commercial uses of the home standards, I'm not going to mention everything, but I want to point out several things. Um, townhomes are permitted if it has demonstrated that they conform to the law in the building standards set out in table two dash four point, one point three, lots and building standards of housing types. Um, the development should have a minimal site area of one and a half acre, one and a half acre, excuse me. Uh, not more than eight or few, then two townhomes may be joined together with the same staggered front yard setbacks. If a development is proposed with staggered front setback lines, the unit that is established closest to the front property line must meet the minimum required front yard setbacks for the district. Uh, according to the, um, sketch plan, uh, this property would have a urban, an urban character feel. Um, it would be misuse development, um, it'd be eighteen townhome units and sis commercial units. It's on a little over three quarters of an acre, it would have three buildings, so pretty much the sketch plan meets the requirements of the unified development ordinance. And these are the townhome standards according to table dash two point four point one point three, law and building standards by housing types. So currently, the townhome proposal meets the minimum requirements. And these are site photos, more like a panoramic view, and pretty much, you know, the, uh, proposed townhome development will be located in this area, and, like I say, it's on the outskirts of the, uh, downtown district. And this is pretty much a site layout of the proposal from a bird's eye view. Uh, you know, like I said, this site, uh, layout of the property, which displays how the proposed misuse development would look, like I said, from a bird's eye view, and that concludes staff's report.
Okay. Any questions of staff, of the commissioners? All right, this is, correct me if I'm wrong, is this is a sketch plan, we do not have a public hearing?
Uh, you're correct, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, any other questions? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the sketch plan.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve and seconded, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sketch plan is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. That, uh, is that it? Uh, that was a thick packet, I think that is. Motion to adjourn, I heard that one. There a second? Motion to second, we are adjourned then, thank you.